...our childhood friends and my allergies have kicked in with a vengeance. I'm afraid I can't talk for the hour or two this may take. So Vice Chair, Commissioner Harden is going to run the meeting tonight. And I just appreciate everybody being here. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to call to order the June 1st, 2021 meeting. Madam Chair, do we have a call?
Yes, we have a call.
Okay. Is there, we've been asking for volunteers and since, we do want to remind everybody about Memorial Day and the reason it means so much. It's why we're here. It's why we're able to speak our minds and elect officials and because people paid the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom. So I was wondering if we might have a veteran from the audience that would like to lead us in the invocation and the pledge? So if no takers, I will ask our veteran. Wait a minute.
Mr. Queen.
Mr. Queen, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a prayer. Father God, we just thank you for this another day you've given us. We thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. Father, we pray your blessings on these commissioners as they have their meeting tonight. Help them that all the decisions they make will be for the betterment of our county as a whole. My Father, just lead, guide, and direct them as they go through the meeting. We just pray all these things in this time.
At this time, we would like to recognize any elected officials. If you would stand and state your name and what you're elected for.
Danny Lapp, School Board.
Mrs. Harden, Registered Ds.
Robert Queen, School Board.
Thank you. And recognition of any veterans?
(Applause). Let's go back and according to your name and branch of service.
Connie Queen, United States Air Force.
Jason Falls, United States Air Force.
Val Tony, United States Navy.
Larry Moore, Air Force.
Floyd Queen, Air National Guard.
Johnny Hudson, U.S. Army. Look, we've got the county veterans pen with the veterans rocker. Does any of, don't have one? If you don't have one, would you come up and?
I think we've got three.
So this is the county pen with the veterans rocker. Do we give to the best? Come up and appreciate your service.
I appreciate you.
Appreciate your service. Appreciate your service.
Okay, now we would like to recognize any law enforcement.
Danny Al, County Sheriff's.
Thank you, Danny. And recognition of county department heads. If you would stand.
Harry Melton, Assistant County Manager.
Martha Thompson, Deputy County Attorney.
Allison Moody, Human Resources.
Josh Davis, Solid West Department.
Jason Falls, Business Development Director.
Chris Lauren, Queen.
Lewis Jackson, Finance.
Perry Davis, Emergency Management Department.
Morty Gold.
There are those who may.
There are saying public.
Tom McDele, U.S.
Katie Johnson, Social Services.
Thank you, guys. Okay, at this time, are there any items to be added to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve or deny the agenda as presented.
I make a motion to adopt the proposed agenda as written. One second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. The motion pa, okay. So now we have a couple special recognitions and I'm going to turn it over to Phyllis Nolan, the clerk to the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Board and attendees. We are very excited to have you all here tonight as we recognize the recipients of the 2021 North Carolina Governor's Volunteer Service Award, recognizing those from Cleveland County. The Governor's Volunteer Service Award Program was created by the Office of the Governor in 1979 to recognize those North Carolinians who dedicated the most in their volunteerism. Through the years, the award has been bestowed on thousands of North Carolinians who have shown concern, compassion, engagement, and involvement for their neighbors by volunteering in their local communities. At this time, I'd like to call Perry Davis, our Emergency Management Director and Fire Marshal, to speak about our first recipient.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. Mr. Chair, hope you get to film better soon. It's an honor and privilege to introduce a man who defines dedication of a public servant and worthy recipient of the North Carolina Governor's Volunteer Service Award, Floyd Queen. He has served the Shanghai Volunteer Fire Department for 60 years. He has volunteered as a firefighter, an engineer, and treasurer of his department. Floyd brought to the fire service three dedicated sons, Robert, Jeff, and Jimmy, who continue to be involved in the fire service. Two have made fire service careers and all have volunteered and some still remain volunteers. He also has a grandson, Jared, who is now active in the department. So combined total, we've added that up and we think we've got about 174 years of experience among that group. So his contributions to service extend beyond itself. In addition to his membership at Shanghai, Floyd also gives of his time to the Cleveland County Firefighters Association as treasurer, maintaining financial records and death benefits for association members. He still today remains active in his department responding to calls for service. Floyd also serves as a volunteer for the Gideon's International as well as various duties at Popper Springs Baptist Church. Floyd, if you'll come up.
Why don't we, why don't you two go right in the center of the board right behind me?
Do you want to have your family come up and get a picture? Just so I have more room to get a picture. Is this somebody put on that? I'm going to kind of. One, two, three, smile. All right, got it. Thank you.
Our next recipient of the, received the Volunteer Medallion Award. This is a very prestigious award, which was implemented in 2006 to recognize the top 20 to 25 volunteers in the state. Medallion recipients are nominated at the county level by the county award coordinator. Only one medallion nomination is permitted per county. A statewide panel reviews and evaluates all of these nominations to determine the award recipients. Medallion award recipients are honored at an annual recognition ceremony, which is held, which was held virtually this year, again, due to COVID-19. At this time, I'd like to call former Commissioner Susan Allen and Josh Props from the Boys and Girls Club to come front.
Commissioners, citizens, pardon me in advance if I stumble over any of this. This is, it's very personal to me. It's truly an honor to, to present this award to Dr. Weller. When, when former Commissioner Susan Allen came to me and said, "I'd like to nominate Dr. Weller for this award. Have you got anything on that we can use for this application?" I was like, "Have I got anything?" Well, let me dig up. So I dug up some stuff and, you know, Relay for Life, found things that he'd done for Relay for Life, and found things that he'd done with the Rotary Club and, and with the Lutheran Men of Mission and with, you know, so many other organizations in addition to my connection, you know, with the Boys and Girls Club and his 17-plus years of Board President and been on board since 1994. And I thought, I started thinking of the, of the thousands of hours and the thousands of individuals and the thousands of dollars that Dr. Weller has, has raised and had, you know, for the Boys and Girls Club and the lives that he's impacted. So it truly is an honor. Started thinking, "I'm working for the Energizer Bunny." You know, because it, it brought a passage from Galatians to mind. It says, "Galatians 6:9 says, 'Let us not become weary in doing good; for at the proper time we'll reap a harvest if we do not give up. Therefore, as we have opportunity, let us do good to all people, especially those who belong to the family believers.'" Again, I've become weary in my job. I've become weary in doing good, but there's the Energizer Bunny. Just constantly doing good. And if, in fact, when, when there's a project that we're working on, Jack will say, "Do you know so-and-so? Have you asked so-and-so?" And I'll say, "No," and he'll go scrolling through his 9,000 contacts in his phone and he'll find that person and we'll call him. So if you, if you haven't been contacted by Dr. Weller, don't worry, you will at some point in time. And when he does contact, you don't feel bad about it and don't push it away. Look at it as an opportunity to join in an awesome cause because that's all he gets involved with. He gets involved and does awesome things, people, and has a tremendous impact. And if you get involved with whatever he's doing, you'll have an impact too. So, Dr. Weller, I can't think of anyone more deserving of this.
I'd like to say something. Good to see everyone, the Commissioners. Hope you feel better. Thank you for having us here tonight. Jack is a fellow Board Member, has been so, he's a lifesaver in so many different ways and I like the fact that I can call him a friend. And he's been on the Board for 27 years and he's, not only does he get out in the community, but he comes and sits down at the table with these kids and draws with them and talks to them and gets involved with every activity that goes on in the club. So really just cannot say enough for what Jack does for the club and what the club does for our community. So thank you very much, Jack.
(Applause). The Board Members looking on coming up?
We're remembering you too, in the summer.
I'm not going to let you do that again. I know you. Your mouth also.
Wait, wait, get this, get this out. Oh, let me take a picture. You went all the way.
Thank you for what you do, Chris. It's a very picture. Thank you.
You are good too, you girls. I noticed the other guy, so that's why I turned around.
Katie and Barb, this is his wife and daughter.
You guys come up here too, I'm sorry.
Although you're bouncing. Just, you guys first.
Okay. Ready? Everyone, look where you're being.
That's the medallion part where it looks.
All right, one, two, three, smile. One, two, three, smile. Got it. Thank you. Sure, sure, yes, you may. Congratulations. Oh, absolutely.
You can't get out of, out of this without a commercial by the Boys and Girls Club. And I appreciate the recognition, but I think we need to thank the county Commissioners who have continued to recognize the need to help kids in the community. When COVID started, the schools were closed, we had to close our Boys and Girls Clubs. Our staff, Josh among them, led the thing to say, "What can we do to help our kids at the Boys and Girls Club?" When the schools started to feed the children and do things virtual, we recognized that there was over 800 children that couldn't pick up a meal at the school. And we coordinated over 70, I can't say we did. Josh and the staff at Boys and Girls Club coordinated 70 volunteers that picked up meals to feeding sites and then delivered them to the children in the county. The thing that's important, once the teachers found out somebody was delivering meals to those kids, packets started to go home. You get the homework on Monday, Thursday they picked up, they completed homework. So the virtual world was the kind of thing they had real paper to work with. When the schools were out, a lot of the community, day camp kind of things didn't occur because people said because of the COVID, we, we just can't do it. We figured it out and thanks to the Health Department from Cleveland County, they came in and said, "Social distancing, six feet, you can't have 120 kids, but you can have 40 kids at this facility. You can have 30 kids at another facility." So we were able to do that all summer long, was to provide activities for children. And again, these are kids from kindergarten all the way to high school seniors. And the majority of them, our, our mission is to help those kids, especially those that need help the most. But the kids we're talking about, 75% are on free and reduced lunches. 95%, or, and I'm sorry, 81% are single parent homes. We're not talking about the economic privilege, we're talking about the kids that do need help. I was really proud of what they were doing by providing those summer programs. When the schools came back with the two days on, three days off, Dr. Fisher called and said, "We're looking to see if there's ways that we can help some of these parents." And again, the Commissioner stepped up and offered a subsidy that would allow daycare to provide daycare for children on the days that they weren't in school, but they were in a, in a facility or an activity. And the Boys and Girls Club opened up a new unit at Kazer Elementary. And we started with 15 kids and I think, Josh, we're up to about 42 members right now, 42 members at that Kazer Elementary. And we're looking at ways, because the summer school that's going to happen is Monday through Thursday, parents need a place for their children on Friday. And again, we're looking at Kazer Elementary providing a program on Friday, we're looking at Foster Elementary, and we're looking at several other schools where we could provide a Boys and Girls Club experience on that Friday for a lot less money than, and again, I think the average daycare right now is $100, $100 a week. And most places won't let you just pay for one day, you have to pay $100 a week. So you, again, all it costs a child at the Boys and Girls Club is $50 a year. And I know you're recognizing me for my involvement, but you need to understand, these kids need help all the time. And again, I appreciate the Commissioners with the help that they've given us and I also appreciate my Board and the work that they've done. This year, we're going to have to raise $400,000. And some of you are sitting there saying, "Maybe I don't want to be on Jack's phone list." I'm not going to ask you for all $400,000, but I might ask you for $100 on a car raffle. I might ask you to support a golf tournament, or more importantly, just to give a gift to help sponsor a child. The actual cost for a child to be part of the Boys and Girls Club is $1,000 a year. And that's because of the staffing requirements and with COVID, all the extra cleaning and all the things that you have to do to make sure those children are safe. So again, I appreciate this recognition. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And I really am glad Speaker Moore is here to hear this, so he understands what we're doing to try to make kids safer in Cleveland County.
Okay, next would be citizen recognition. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up?
No, ma'am, no one's signed up.
Okay, so we will move on. And I would like to call on County Manager Brian Epley to present the consent agenda.
Ms. Harden, thanks. Members of the Board, several items for consideration this evening. We'll begin with Item A, which are the minutes from your May 4, 2021 Regular Commissioner Meeting. Those minutes are in your packet for review and consideration. Item B is from our Tax Administration Department. This is a request for a refund in the amount of $254.26 to a taxpayer that was a result of a clerical error in our tax selections department. Those details are also in your packet. Item C is Budget Amendment Number 61 on the year. This is a request to budget $21,423 in state grant dollars from the Department of Health and Human Services, specifically for our environmental health program. And that'll be, that's based, it's statewide and it's based on the percentage of establishments inspected. And please present a report that we are at 100% of all eating establishments in that criteria timeframe. Those grant dollars will be used off existing salaries in that department. Item D from our Planning Department is a request to set a public hearing for July the 6th. The public hearing would be for conditional rezoning from residential to light industrial for parcel 52468, which is located at 134 K Road. Again, tonight's request is just to set that public hearing and allow staff to do the appropriate notifications. Item E, also from the Planning Department, again, a request to set a public hearing for July 6th, 2021, for another conditional rezoning of parcel 59861, that's located at 110 Battleground Road. And that would be also from light industrial to residential with a conditional district. Item F is a resolution to join a housing consortium from the Isothermal Planning and Development Commission. This is really to access funds that flow through the HUD function, up to $800,000 a year. There is no commitment from this Board. This is a consortium that Isothermal is managing and putting together with all the counties that are part of that council of government. And again, that would be funds available project by project that would allow us to help address some of the housing challenges that we have in Cleveland County. And finally, for consideration is Item G. And this is tax foreclosure request to set, set up and begin the upset bid process for several parcels, 20706, 27395, 27398, 40159, and 26934. Once we begin the upset bid process, we'll come back to the Board once, once those bids are received and present in more detail for the Board consideration. So again, at this point, we're just asking for permission to move forward with that process. Madam Chair, that concludes the consent. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, are there any discussions?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, so we have several public hearings tonight, so I'm going to ask our clerk to read the rules for the public hearings.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. After the public hearing has been opened, persons wishing to speak for or against the proposition will be asked to come forward and first state his or her name and address. All comments from the public are to be directed to the Board. There are no comments directed at other members of the audience. If a speaker has a question, that question is to be directed to the Chair. No one will be allowed to speak at the hearing more than once unless the Chair recognizes a speaker a second time for rebuttal of information brought forth after the speaker has spoken. The original presentation by a speaker will be limited to no more than five minutes. The rebuttal presentation will be limited to no more than three minutes.
Okay, now I would like to recognize our County Manager, Brian Epley, again, who will present the 2021, 2022 County Managers Recommended Budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Harden. Again, Members of the Board, I'm, I'm grateful for the opportunity. Just for a few moments, I would remind you that at your last meeting, we had a much more in-depth presentation of the budget, somewhere around 70 slides. And I have a modified and condensed version this evening, just as a refresher. Certainly happy to answer any questions, but as you know, over the last two weeks, since that Board meeting, our budget has been available online as a full document in excess of 250 pages and included the, the budget message in a narrative form accompanied by revenue projections and capital improvement plan, along with all of the budget details on a line item by line item basis. That, that budget's also being available in multiple spots throughout the community for public inspection and is statutorily required following this, again, brief refresher, there will be an opportunity for the, for the statutory public hearing. So as I mentioned two weeks ago, as we were working through the process, this has been a, a very rewarding, a very challenging budget process at the same time. It's been an opportunity to link things in momentum that we had pre-COVID with all the things that we've learned from a process or perspective through COVID and, and trying to synchronize both, again, pre-COVID and post-COVID in a, in a way that maximizes county resources through our next 12-month operating plan, which is our budget. I think it's always helpful to establish how the budget works and, and the mechanics behind the development process. All things that we do are linked to the Commissioner's Strategic Plan, which is comprised of five focus areas. And, and we attempt very diligently to link the resources to those priorities and to the vision that the County Commissioners outlay during your working sessions and during your budget workshops. And again, here's just a, a quick optic that shows that we, we try to actionize that strategic plan amongst competing priorities to narrow that scope into an output that can be measured and drives high performance. And we really think that the mechanism that we're using now is resolved and, and really focused on improving our community. Try to be a purpose-filled organization, making sure that both from a strategy perspective and a value perspective, that we're making decisions and recommendations that support that. And we think that makes us the most effective. So just as a quick highlight at a 50,000-foot view, and again, I'll, I'll give you a few more detailed optics as we move through the, the presentation, but very quickly, what you're going to see in the, the broad takeaways are that your general fund, which is the county's primary operating fund, is balanced below revenue neutral. We'll talk more in depth about what revenue neutral means, but as you are all aware, the county worked through a required revaluation process in 2021, which, which statutorily at that point, we must calculate the tax rate that would, that would equate to the same amount of revenue with a, with a, with a growth factor built in. That would be 55 cents. Again, I'll talk about it more in depth later, but the takeaway here is your general fund is balanced below revenue neutral at 54.75 cents, which is about a 2.25 cent tax rate reduction. The Cleveland County school budget is presented and balanced at 14 cents, which is a one-cent reduction. Your budget in front of you for consideration does not include any American Rescue Plan funding. We developed the, the budget foundationally from a zero-based perspective. Not only do we try to link it to the Board's priorities, but we also attempt very critically to, to avoid incremental budgeting, which means we don't start with last year's year number and build upon that. We literally start with zero and try to frame priorities and deliverables around the number that's represented in the budget. Your budget does include about 1.75 million for future debt service and that will be allocated to Phase 1 of the Board's Capital Improvement Plan, specifically the public safety aspect. The budget does anticipate recapturing the majority of prior year revenue loss that was created by COVID. So that would be things like occupancy tax, things like sales tax, things like per- at that point, we must calculate the tax rate that would, that would equate to the same amount of revenue with a, with a, with a growth factor built in. That would be 55 cents. Again, I'll talk about it more in depth later, but the takeaway here is your general fund is balanced below revenue neutral at 54.75 cents, which is about a 2.25 cent tax rate reduction. The Cleveland County school budget is presented and balanced at 14 cents, which is a one-cent reduction. Your budget in front of you for consideration does not include any American Rescue Plan funding. We developed the, the budget foundationally from a zero-based perspective. Not only do we try to link it to the board's priorities, but we also attempt very critically to, to avoid incremental budgeting, which means we don't start with last year's number and build upon that. We literally start with zero and try to frame priorities and deliverables around the number that's represented in the budget. Your budget does include about 1.75 million for future debt service, and that will be allocated to Phase 1 of the board's capital improvement plan, specifically the public safety aspect. The budget does anticipate recapturing the majority of prior year revenue loss that was created by COVID. So that would be things like occupancy tax, things like sales tax, things like permitting that we, at this time a year ago, were in a complete period of uncertainty, were first forced to dial back. We don't include any funding or additional expenditures related to the Catawba Resort. And we do include a full year of your most recent comprehensive pay study, which I would remind you was about 2.1 million. And we have an allowance for a potential mid-year CPI adjustment, depending on what that inflation allocation looks like at 1231, 21. There's two additional FTEs, one in the Register of Disease Department and one in our Code Enforcement Department. Again, as this is a much, much more condensed version than the presentation you saw two weeks ago, I won't go through all of the trend data, but there are several economic indicators that we try to forecast and model because they have such a significant impact on our operational budget, specifically from a revenue perspective. As we talked about last time, and we, at that time, presented some data from Moody's that looked at automobile sales all the way back to the 1970s and compared, when adjusted for value, the number of units being sold today versus one year ago, versus 10, 15, 20 years ago. And again, that's a big deal because automobile sales represent about 8 or 9% of our total tax base. It's about $800 million of our 10.3 billion tax base. And we know that they depreciate so quickly if we're not replacing those values with new sales, that that can quickly create tax base deterioration and impact our revenue stream. New home sales, retail sales, again, all indicators that impact revenue collections for the counties, that offset the costs that we know are required to provide the services that we do. And then we looked at some trend data specific to the Institute of Manufacturing procurement ability that represents, is, it gives us a metrics for manufacturers' ability to obtain raw materials, convert that into finished goods for two factors. One is it's such a large percentage of our labor force, at about 20% of our total labor force involved in advanced manufacturing. And then the other reason is such a large percentage of our tax base. So again, the, the general takeaway when we look at all of the analytics and we try to forecast, is that we walk away with a very optimistic outlook over the next 12 months that'll impact the FY '22 budget. We also took a, a, a quick snapshot at what the next five years would look like at a 54.75 cent tax rate, assuming about a 2% growth pattern in that tax base. And, and then we looked, again, at the bottom here, at the knowns for what's included in the FY '22 budget from a big cost center perspective. I mentioned that we have about 1.75 million in future debt service allocated to that public safety capital. I also mentioned the 2.1 million for the market study for pay and classification. We know that the state treasurer is going to require about a $400,000 increase in our retirement, the employer side of our retirement contribution. I mentioned the new personnel. I'm very pleased with the, the very moderate investment into our Employee Wellness Fund. We've talked about that many, many times, that our fund just continues to perform at a high level. And, and those dollars and those cost savings from health claims ultimately create flexibility in the budget that help us achieve other priorities. As we'll touch on briefly, there's about a $400,000 increase to the, to the Community College. We incurred, as we moved through our 28 operating departments, about a $625,000 general increase in cost of doing business. That's contracts, that's cost of materials, so forth. And then we've also started, as you can see on the very bottom line, year one of a three year fund balance payback that was required to balance the budget in FY '21 as a result of resetting that because of COVID restrictions and regulatory shutdowns. Very quickly, on your revenue portfolio, you've got about 125, 120.5 million dollar general fund budget. Your top three revenue sources continue to be adult form tax, about 59%, restricted intergovernmental, which make up about 20%. That's primarily state grants, federal grants, Health and Human Services, and about 13% in sales tax. And those would be very common across North Carolina for counties similar to us. It's the top three. I'll touch briefly on the property tax and revow process. As a reminder, a citizen's tax liability is a, is a function and a product of two variables. One is the value, the assessed value of the property. And the second variable there is the effective tax rate. And so as one goes up, the other can go down, and, and, and the equation obviously would, would generate whatever the tax liability may be. And I'm pleased to present this budget with a, with a reduced tax rate of 54.75 cents. You can see of that 54.75, about 11.65 going to Cleveland County Public Schools, another 2.76 going to the Community College. The remainder is allotted internally with the largest proportionate share going to payroll. But I think the, the takeaway here is a very consistent and committed policy direction from commissioners currently and in the past of trying to minimize tax burdens on our citizens. As we discussed earlier, the LGC, the Local Government Commission, has a, a statutorily required communication and calculation for what is revenue neutral. Revenue neutral is very different than revenue equal, but the point of revenue neutral is to present what the rate would need to be in order to generate tax revenue in a normal year if rebal never happened, meaning you get to capitalize on prior year growth, but not on the current market adjustment. And that would be 55 cents for us during 2021. Very quickly, on your, on the expenditure side of your budget, again, a 120, 120.5 million dollar budget, your largest three functions here are allocated with Human Services, Education, and Public Safety. If you recall, two weeks ago, we really talked about prioritizing and allocating funding based on commissioner priorities. And I'll remind you, back in 2015, you had about 33% of your budget going to Human Services and only about 19% going to Public Safety. And we've been able to very strategically shift those cost centers over the last seven years to more properly align with, A, our peer groups as we do benchmarking, but also with the priorities developed in the Board of Commissioners Strategic Plan. Cleveland County Public Schools, again, recommended tax rate is 14 cents, which is a one-cent reduction. The funding is, from a cash flow perspective, is the equivalent of the prior year with additional collections from the 14 cents, which we assume will be higher than what 15 cents generated this year. Again, an additional sales tax would go into an escrow that's controlled by the Board of Commissioners, and, and those funds would be allotted at the time that there's satisfactory reporting on teacher supplements and capital programming. We anticipate that being a tick over 1.4 million into, into that escrow. Our Community College, I would remind you that about 90% of their budget comes from federal and state appropriations, but there is a local contribution, both for operational and capital. Currently, there's about a $22 million operating budget at Cleveland Community College. And included in next year's budget is year two of a five-year funding ladder that would be intended to really, really make Cleveland County, from a local funding perspective, more competitive. There's 59 community colleges in North Carolina, and as we've all shared and talked about before, historically, the local contribution from Cleveland County has been, has been lacking. It's not been, you know, outside the top 50. And, and that doesn't mean, I, you know, I caution everyone to, to recognize, that doesn't mean that there's been a lack of funding because the Community College has been exceptionally fruitful in private donations and state grants. But we want to be committed to making sure that the Community College is, is our premier workforce development and training partner is well-funded, and we think continuing on this ladder through 2025 will make us more comparable to competing communities. Our Fire District, as you all recall, we have 12 volunteer fire departments in Cleveland County, 10 of which are part of our Fire District. And, and that included in next year's budget is the tax rate remaining the same at 8.75 cents. That would generate roughly $150,000 of new revenue, split, split essentially equally across all 10 departments in the district at about $15,000 apiece. And there you can see the funding allocation per department, which would help offset the new incurred debt service of public safety communication replacement that took place last year. So to summarize, from, from a operational and priority perspective, I wanted to show the budget changes over the last six to seven operating years with a percentage change with a heavy focus on public safety, but also very strategically doing so in areas that make us more vertically integrated, that make us more efficient, that right-size this county government, so that we are able to, to move the ball forward in cer, and in key areas that, that serve our purpose of improving the community, but in a way that doesn't grow the overall budget, as you can see there, since 2015, only about a 6.15% total budget increase. And here's just another quick optic of that, so you can see a very, a very strategic and managed approach. Some specific Board of Commissioner Strategic Plan focus areas. I mentioned the funding for your Public Safety Capital Improvement Plan, implementation of an organ, excuse me, I'd skip number one, the specific Public Safety Strategic Plan. That was the top priority coming out of the Commissioners' Work Session back in February to refresh the Volunteer Fire Five-Year Strategic Plan, and that's been broadened to be more comprehensive of all public safety functions, including 911 and emergency management, EMS, law enforcement, and fire. We want to stay positioned as an employer of choice for the 11th straight year, where there'll be no increases on spousal dependent care for health insurance purposes. We're going to be able to maintain about $1,100 contribution in HSA dollars. As I mentioned, back in April, we were very aggressive in fully implementing the market study. We've included our performance bonus project in this year's budget and really feel strongly about managing and continuing to manage with a 7% to 8% total organizational-wide turnover rate, something that we're really proud of. There's dedicated funding for, for improving our community health rankings and keeping that in the lens of priority. And then re-engaging with our job creators, people like Greenhead, KSM, Clearwater, Mafic, those folks that are out in the community, creating tax base and creating jobs. And, and we want, as you are all aware, about three years ago, in 2018, 2019, we created a project called Accelerate Cleveland, which is a paid partnership for interns going through the Community College, in which they're paid an hourly rate to work towards a certified production technician certification. And then, and then they're actively recruited by those job creators in a partnership. And to this point, we've had 100% job placement, and it's worked really, really well. Post-COVID, we're looking forward to turning that back on. Some other priorities and deliverables, certainly, we want to make sure that we're prepared for electronic timekeeping, for the Catawba Resort, all of these strategies, maintaining a compliance with the Board of Commissioners, fund balance percentage of greater than 18%, demonstrating leadership in, in COVID as we continue hopefully to, to eradicate and move beyond that in totality. And then some community litter and beautification process resources, as well as hopefully beginning our first year as, with a Citizens Academy and some other engagement strategies that we think will better inform and be transparent to our community. Very quickly, some emerging issues that are considerations as part of your budget. Thank you very kindly. From a policy development, we are planning your summer work session to consider the Animal Services Ordinance, as well as your Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which was, again, existing from now, since 2005. From an operational perspective, being cognizant of our jail population, remote workplace, and we want to make sure that we have a recession-ready budget. And then on the economic development front, continuing to market and hopefully sell our shell building, potentially evaluate Shell Building Number Four. Workforce development's always want, we always want that to be a priority. And then continuing to evaluate how we can best utilize the Dover Mill property. I've mentioned a couple of times and included in your budget packet was the Comprehensive and Full Capital Improvement Plan. Here's the top five projects that come from that, as well as the technology plan, as we're all aware, data security, automation, and transparency continue to be critical in, in, in business operations in 2021, and we see that only escalating as we move forward. And we want to be better there, so we want to invest dollars and be, be very intentional about trying to work towards this 2025 systems planning. Few slides here on performance management. I mentioned it earlier, I'm very pleased that, to include in the recommended budget, this cultural investment into our workforce that, again, promotes more with less and high performance and rewards buy-in to organizational-wide data points that ultimately generate cost savings and more productivity, but also rewards our employees for being a part of that solution. Very similarly to this year, plan to pay those out in September and March, based on the performance dashboard and indicators that we're able to accomplish. And if we achieve all six between the two pay periods, you're looking at a potential of 3%. And that's what I have prepared. Again, I recognize that's much more concise than two weeks ago, but I hope was fruitful and being a refresher, and I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, I've, I've got a couple, and I'll ask the first one and then I'll, I'll wait. But in your presentation, you put out of our 54.75 cent, $10.2 million of the school system, and so over and above the 14 cents. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's about another 11 and a half cents.
That comes out of our operating expenses.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the calculation of revenue neutral versus true revenue neutral, and I've had several citizens ask me about that. Could you explain that just a little bit further?
Yeah, so the Physical Control Act, which is North Carolina General Statute 159, and that governs all procurement, all financial-related local government regulations, specifically requires the board to be presented with a revenue-neutral rate. That revenue-neutral rate is a formula-generated calculation that includes statutorily five years of average growth experienced in the community. So you take the projected tax base post-reval, and obviously, this is required as part of a revaluation process, which only happens periodically. For us, this year, revaluation was dictated because of our sales ratio. The sales ratio is a computation managed by the North Carolina Department of Revenue that evaluates market sales prices compared to tax values that we're carrying. And when homes and other real estate transactions are happening well above what we have the tax base listed at, and that's managed and recorded via MLS, that, that creates proportional distribution challenges on the sales ratio that requires a revaluation. With all that being said, revenue neutral doesn't mean the same amount of money as last year. It doesn't mean the equivalent revenue from last year to this year. It means what would revenue be this year had rebal never happened? And there would be some natural growth included in that, and that's, that's insinuated through the average of the previous five years. So for us, revenue equal, meaning if you said we had $10 in property tax revenue last year, we want to have $10 in property tax revenue this year, that would be lower than 55 cents. The 55 cent revenue neutral calculation includes an average growth rate of about 4.5%.
Thank you. You mentioned the American Rescue Plan. Could you explain that a little bit? That, I understand that's for the federal government.
Yes, sir. So we're still learning a lot about that. We, we, we don't know. What I would say is Treasury is giving us intermittent guidance. It is one-time money. Cleveland County is expecting to receive somewhere in the tune of $19 million. So that is an extraordinary allocation. The spending compliance, the allowable cost is still uncertain. The one thing that we do know is that it, it is part of the latest spending package from the federal government. We feel relatively guaranteed that it's coming here. It's one-time, so we, we think the most appropriate and strategic use of those dollars would be in a one-time nature, and, and we want to be more reliant upon the scrutiny and the direction from the Treasury on how it can be spent before we present it to the budget. So once those dollars come in, we would then put together a plan, hopefully for one-time spending, things like capital or things like strategic priorities, and present that to the commissioners for consideration at that time. But the fact that it's non-recurring, the fact that it's non-operational, doesn't, doesn't best fit with your operational budget plan, so that's why it's not included in your budget.
Well, as we all know, that, there's, most of the time when, when, when they send us stuff, there's strings attached. So do we know yet what that's going to be, or if they will be?
We're, we're finding out more as we move. Things that have been mentioned are things like broadband, public utilities, anything that would be Health and Human Services-related, COVID frontline, in rare cases, revenue replacement. But really, that, there's been no formal guidance issued. We're in coordination on a weekly basis with NC Pro, with the Association of County Commissioners, and with our, our local auditors, our local CPA firm, to make sure that we fully understand it. And I'm confident that we'll be able to draft a plan that the commission finds satisfactory and, and certainly maximizes the return on those funds. At this time, though, I just, there's, there's not enough information on the compliance side, and we think that could be as much as two or three months away. The good news is, I want to believe that you have through 1231, 2024, to fully utilize all those funds.
Employee retention has become a big deal lately. I know in the private sector, we can't hire anybody, and you feel like we've taken care of our employees' compensation enough that, especially with the performance bonus that... enough that, especially with the performance bonus, that we're going to be able to hang on to our prized employees?
I, I really do. I'm so pleased. Our human resources team, our executive leadership team talk about this regularly. We recently just concluded a, an organizational-wide survey where we're trying to keep a pulse on the things that are going well and the things that we can do better at. I would say that from a compensatory perspective, the performance bonus program has worked exceptionally well. Our turnover rate for the last eight months is a tick above 92%, which is, which is really, really impressive. And had we not, had the board not taken the very bold stance, which I applaud, to implement your pay market study April 1st, that would have been implemented as part of the budget. And there would have been a $2.1 million spending earmarked there. So I feel very confident that we're competitive. Our ability to recruit has significantly improved in some of those very key spots over the last three months since, since that implementation. And I'm just grateful for the board for your support. But I, I feel, I feel very good about where we've positioned ourselves to be competitive. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I have one other, and the answer from myself and the audience also. HR departments increased several thousand dollars this year. Can you explain why and for the savings that's come in fund to support it?
Yeah. And I, and I think that's a great point, Commissioner Hutchins. And I would say even further than that, if you look back really at the summary slide of, of, of spending back in 2015, the Human Resources Department, well, it's not broken out there. I had it broken out in the presentation two weeks ago, was somewhere around $450,000. And now it's about $1.2 million. So it's gone up literally three times in seven years, although the total budget for the organization hasn't. And, and again, I, I see central administration, human resources, IT, and HR as the spine of the organization, as we're trying to focus on being lean, vertically integrated, quick and efficient. Though, that, those functions being appropriately staffed and appropriately funded are risk management strategies, as well as training and development. There's a variety of things that go into making sure that, that, that the organization is programmed the right way. The specific change this year from last year in that department is really just supporting that concept of vertical integration. Historically, Health and Human Services, both DSS and the Health Department, were managed by administrative boards. And as you're aware, over the last 24 months, those boards have been converted to advisory in nature. Excuse me, I apologize. When they were administrative, both departments had specific HR functions inside the department that were staffed by personnel. And since we brought that in-house, we've also taken those positions. So although it looks like human resources may have increased, other departments have seen an offsetting decrease to try to right-size and program our resources centrally so that we can be more strategic.
Any other questions? Okay. We will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the FY 2021, 2022 recommended budget, please come forward and state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the recommended budget, please come forward and state your name and address.
Budget.
The budget.
This is for or against? I'm going to ask a question.
This is just a speaking.
Is this an opportunity to speak for or against?
No.
Not really, not really a Q and A session.
Okay. And then we're going to close the public hearing. And if there's any more questions or discussions, or if not, I will ask for a motion to approve or deny the recommended budget.
I believe that we approve the budget as presented.
I'll second it. And I'd just like to tell the, the staff and the manager, I appreciate the six months or more of work y'all done on this and starting at zero and coming up with a really good budget that's taking care of our employees and at the same time getting the job done we need to get done and staying focused on the future. And I just really appreciate it. But I'll second that motion.
Okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you. And so now we will move to Planning Department, case 21-03, updates to the Cleveland County Unified Development Ordinance to align with North Carolina General Statute 160D. And I would recognize Chris Martin, our senior planner, who will present the updates.
Good evening, board. Chairman, thank you for having me tonight. Planning, the Planning Department has a request from staff to amend our county development code, our code of ordinances. And what I'd like to do is give you a little bit of background of the, what this is pertaining to the 160D general statutes and the purpose of it. So the request is to modify our code so that it conforms with chapter 160D of the North Carolina General Statutes. So what is that? What is 160D? We've been hearing this term now for a year or more. It's basically the new statutory land use law for cities and counties. And it was developed by the North Carolina Bar Association and passed in 2019. Now, I'll give you a little bit of background. In North Carolina, cities and counties with their, pertaining to planning and development ordinances, have worked off two separate general statutes, 153A for counties and 160A for cities. So what 160D does basically is to consolidate both of those chapters in the general statutes into one chapter, 160D, so that it, it would provide for simplicity, simplicity, and it would clarify a lot of the language throughout that chapter. And as a side note, we have until July 1st to amend our ordinance to conform with this new chapter. So the purpose is to basically, as I said, to simplify the ordinance, or simplify the general statutes, and make it to where planning staff can navigate the general statutes easily when doing our research. You know, one, one thing I want to point out is these changes that you're going to find in your packet would not affect any of our citizens. And really, the only people that would notice a difference would be planning staffs across the state. The methods that this uses is that it places statutes into a more logical organization. It modernizes and clarifies terminologies and procedures without making major policy changes. One example is the word condition, conditional. We hear that a lot with permits, with rezoning requests. And that's an example that we like to use, that, that 160D will simplify that. It'll, it'll clear up what it means and which boards will use that term. And last, you know, I think the purpose of this is to help cities and counties speak the same language so that we're not working off two separate general statutes or two separate chapters in the general statutes. And next, I'd like to turn it over to Henry, who can walk us through some of the impacts that it would have on our ordinance in Cleveland County.
Thank you, board. What I want to do for the next few minutes is just run over a couple of specific changes that we're going to see in our ordinance due to implementation of 160D. So for us specifically, say, well, what changes are we talking about? We're going to see some language changes, just some terminology changes. We're going to see a few procedural changes, very minor things, and I'll go over those. And there are changes that we have to make. And then there are some changes that we may make if the board sees fit. So one of the things that Chris and I talked about doing is, we thought it would be best just to bring to this board tonight the changes that must be made, that this board must implement by July 1st. First thing is that there is, of course, updated references from 153A and 160A to 160D. Our local development ordinance is littered with references to 153A and 160A. And one of the things that, that you will find in here is that we have changed those to their appropriate 160D references, just so after July 1st, there is an actual reference that this is going to, because after July 1st, these specific sections of 153A and 160A will no longer exist. And Chris brought up a good point. If you look down in the next section on terminology, he, he brought up the term conditional and said, this is a big one. Right now, we have these two functions. One is called a conditional use permit, and one is called a conditional use district rezon. And so these terms are very similar, but they are very different functions. And one of the things that 160D does is it tries to separate this terminology so that it's a little easier to go through these processes. So the Board of Adjustment has a process called conditional use permits, and 160D will change those into special use permits. Doesn't change any processes that the Board of Adjustment does. All it does is change the name. And in the same vein, conditional zoning right now, as I stated, we have conditional, conditional use district rezoning. And so now we're going to be changing that to just conditional zoning or conditional rezoning. Process will stay the same. In fact, in your, in your consent agenda tonight, you have two cases where you're going to be doing this function. So the function will not change. It's just changing the name. And so you can see from these examples where it's just, where some terms are confusing, it's just trying to make these a little simpler so that it's, citizens don't get as confused with what process is a Board of Adjustment process and what process is a legislative process through the planning board and the Board of Commissioners. And then a third, third, a third term change is historic preservation standards. Right now, when the Historic Preservation Commission is doing certificates of appropriateness, they have guidelines. But what the state wanted to do is to strengthen that term a little bit. So they've eliminated the term guidelines and changed it to the term standards. So again, doesn't change any processes. None of this is a process change, just terminology change. But we do have a few procedural changes that we want to bring to your all's attention. And as I stated before, they're pretty simple, but I want to run over them real quick. The first is a Board of Adjustment procedure. And this change requires that if, if there is an objection to inclusion of administrative material that goes before the Board of Adjustment, if there's an objection to that, that the board chair rules on that objection. And if there is an appeal to that, then it goes to the entire Board of Adjustment for their decision. Currently, that goes just to the Board of Adjustment as a whole, but this changes that process a little bit. And I think it's important to note that Chris and I were talking about this today, and neither one of us can remember a time when this has ever been an issue. So I don't foresee a lot of impact in this change. Another item is vesting timeframe for multi-phase development. There are a lot of development projects that take a lot of time. A good example, this might be a large-scale subdivision. And most of the time, when someone is going to do a large-scale project like this, the first step is for them to get zoning approval. And it might be several years before they're ready to actually start the process of development. And up till now, the Cleveland County Development Ordinance states that, that we can give them up to two years vested right for their development. And what 160D states is that if it is a multi-phase development, it's over 25 acres, that they can request, the developer can request up to seven years vested rights as opposed to. So it's a larger gap. But again, it's very specific. Must be a multi-phase development, and it must be over 25 acres. And then one of the last procedures we have on here is conflict of interest statements. 160D states that any board that the planning department oversees must have in place conflict of interest statements, and the staff as well. And the two items that, that I want you all to, to note from these conflict of interest statements is that, the first is that if a board member stands to gain monetarily from the outcome of a, of a decision, then that board member must recuse themselves. And the second is that if the board member, if the applicant has a close familial relationship with one of the board members, so if like it's a board member's child or brother, then that board member needs to recuse themselves from the decision. And the staff conflict of interest is very similar, same two ideas. If, if a staff member will gain from this financially, or if it's a close family member to something we're doing, that we need to pass this off to a supervisor or another staff member. And those are all the items that we have for you all tonight that must be approved. So what I'm asking you all to do is that, of course, you'll hold a public hearing, as you all have advertised for. And then what staff is, is requesting is that this board approves these required changes so that our unified development ordinance will coalesce with 160D on July 1st. And with that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioners, any questions, comments?
Well, the same sort of cut and drive, we need to vote to do this before the state forces us to do it. So.
Yeah. You know, we were told that if, you know, if, if you, if you don't, for, for whatever reason, it's still the law on July 1st, no matter what.
And, and it's just streamlining the, the efforts of.
Exactly. Well, now, there are some, some municipalities or counties that have a lot of changes to make. But, you know, interestingly enough, our ordinance as written now was pretty close to what they wanted. So we've been lucky.
Okay. We will open the public hearing. If anyone wishing to speak for or against the updates to the Cleveland County Unified Development Ordinance to align with North Carolina General Statute 160D, please come forward and state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the updates? Seeing there is no one, we will close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion to approve or deny the updates.
I'll make a motion to approve the updates to the 160D ordinance.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay. Now, we go to Planning Department, case 21-06, a request to rezon the property at 120 Oveta Drive, I'm hoping I'm saying that right, from heavy industrial to general business. And we will recognize Chris Martin, our senior planner, again.
So our next item from the Planning Department is a request from Allison and Chad Demonsky. And they are asking for a zoning map amendment to rezon about 63 acres, which is a portion of a 200-acre parcel from heavy industrial to general business. And we've got a map showing that property on the overhead. And as Commissioner Harden stated, the property is located on Oveta Drive. It's a dead-end road which runs off of Long Branch Road, on the battleground end of Long Branch Road, surrounded mostly by residential uses and large parcels. I'll give you a little background. This property was zoned originally as residential. About 10 years ago, the property owner at the time asked to rezon it, the full 200 acres, he asked to rezon it to heavy industrial. Fast forward to today, there are some new owners, and they've got a, the applicants who are potential buyers of, of the 63 acres, and they're asking to rezon it to general business. We've presented this case to the planning board. They voted unanimously to approve this request, and they noted that the general business zoning district was different than the heavy industrial zoning district in that the general business district allowed less intense uses than the heavy industrial district. And one thing I'll add that I forgot to mention, the property itself, it's 63 acres, and it's currently a vacant tract of land. And this case does require a public hearing, and I can answer any questions.
Commissioners, comments or questions?
It does have a public road to, to the property.
There is a public road. It's maintained by the NCDOT to, to the property line. And then there's a gate that accesses that property and continues along a private road.
Anybody else? Okay. We will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against case 21-06, a request to rezon the property at 120 Oveta Drive from heavy industrial to general business, please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Wayne Yarber. I live at 1824 Shelby Road, Kings Mountain. Let me clarify what Mr. Martin said. That piece of property is not vacant. My family. Our family has grazed cattle on that property since 1977. So, it's not vacant. It's not just laying there doing nothing. I can't speak for or against it. I don't know what the new, the buyers are going to do with it. But, you know, it's not a vacant piece of property.
Okay, is, sorry, come on. Yes, I didn't see you coming up.
My, my name is Matt Bale. I live at 206 Dixon Dairy Road, Kings Mountain. This is the second time in 10 years I've been in this room. 10 years ago, sat here and kind of watched some magic happen when it was zoned heavy industrial. I'm not for or against whatever's being proposed. I have no idea what they're wanting to do. My wife and I own land. It joins right there. That's our tract of land. And this farmland, we got cattle on it, house, barns, the whole nine yards. The only thing I'm asking the five of y'all, because I, I sat in here 10 years ago, and there were some untruths got told, and, you know, we did this, whatever. I would like for some common sense, whatever they're wanting to do. I, I own land. I don't want someone to tell me I can or can't do something. But sometimes, I feel like in this county, we're getting a little head over our skis on some things. And whatever the proposal is, just realize there's a tremendous amount of landowners and property owners and homeowners all around that, that are impacted by whatever's wanting to be done. And sometimes, just take a breath and realize that whatever happens there affects everyone. And like I said, I'm not against whatever. I don't know. I have no clue what they're wanting to do. But just use a little common sense on what any decision y'all want to make.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against Case 21-06, the request to rezon the property at 120 Oveta Drive? Seeing there is none, we'll close the public hearing. And do we have any more questions or discussions? I have one, Chris. Please. Could you sort of explain the difference in heavy industrial and general business? Because I may be wrong, but it seems to me it would be more noise, more, more issues for it to be heavy industrial and something come there than general business.
Yes, sir. Our code actually has a definition of both districts. And it describes the heavy industrial zoning district as having uses that are, are more intense, such as manufacturing and fabrication type of uses. The general business zoning districts allow us for uses that are more commercial in nature. Less, less, you know, more out of the manufacturing category and then more into the commercial parks, office, retail type uses.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, then I will ask for a motion to approve or deny the request to rezon the property at 120 Oveta Drive from heavy industrial to general business.
And looking at the piece of property, and the two gentlemen have made the comments, whatever, knowing the property itself, along the backside of it, you've got sewer, you've got gas, you know, that could make a nice housing development or a nice business park, whatever. And I would think it would probably protect the backside more by doing that than it would the front side. So, I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning.
I'll say.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, so now we have another public hearing for Planning Department Case 21-09. And this is a request to rezon the property along Foston Road and Hendrick Lake Road from rural agriculture to residential. And we'll ask for Chris to speak again.
And so our second request is a, another zoning map amendment. The petitioner is Ray Ledford, and he's asking to rezon 31 parcels from rural agriculture to residential. And you've got in your packet a, a map showing those 31 adjoining parcels. He's presented a petition that shows signatures of 29 of those 31 parcels. And the 29 owners, landowners of these parcels are, are in support of his request. The area, this area in particular is pretty much mostly single-family residential in the neighborhood behind his parcel. And then it consists of vacant tracts and some commercial uses on the property south of his parcel, running along Highway 18. The two zoning districts, the difference in between these two zoning districts is that the rural ag, the minimum lot size is three acres, and it also allows for some rural commercial uses. While the residential zoning district, the minimum lot size in this area will be one acre without the rural commercial uses. We presented this case to the Planning Board, and they recommended approval. They noted that the current use of these properties was consistent with residential zoning district. And they also noted that the proposed map connected into the existing residential district that you see on the screen, that white area. They looked at it as basically an extension of that zoning district. This case being an ordinance change to the zoning map also requires public hearing, and I can answer any questions?
What are the lot sizes of the one, just for reference, that were changed? I mean, that were proposed to be changed, I guess you'd say?
They're ranging anywhere from half acre to three acres.
So, more in the residential?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I guess, when all this took place, what, back in the early 90s?
Yeah, so.
You know, why was they taken in? I mean, really, really, they shouldn't have been because, you know, they were non-compliant to start with. Is that correct?
Right. That's, that's correct. The rural ag zoning district was the result, it was a citizen-driven zoning district created by the citizens back in the late 90s. Covered about 14,000 acres in this Foston-Waco area. And in, within that zoning district, when it was created, there were some areas that, there were, some of these neighborhoods with smaller lots were swallowed up in that, in that bigger area. And this, this neighborhood was one of those.
Did this take place before we even had zoning in the county?
It did. It took place before the year 2000, which was when the county-wide zoning was adopted.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, then we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Case 21-09, request to rezon property along Foston Road and Hendrick Lake Road from rural agriculture to residential? Please come state your name and address.
I'm Danny Blanton from 1827 Creek Ridge Road, Shelby, North Carolina. I'm here for Ray and Margaret Ledford. They've had this issue for 18 years. And a gentleman called me and asked me what happened. Mr. Ledford had gotten some poor help. They're needing to divide this thing up. There are two houses on the one parcel of land, and they're needing to get it divided up due to the health reasons and deed-wise and everything like that. And I want to thank the planning and zoning. I went for them. I was the one that got out and done the legwork for him because he wasn't able. And I want to thank y'all for hearing this, and it sure will be appreciated because he struggled with this for 18 years. And to get it separated to so they can have their houses. They got two septic tanks, two Duke power meters. They got everything too. But, and how in the world this happened, nobody knows. But I want to thank y'all for hearing this, and I hope that we can get it squared away for them, and they can get their, in, benefit, or whatever they need to do about their deeds and everything squared away for later days. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against Case 21-09, the request to rezon the property along Foston Road and Hendrick Lake Road from rural agriculture to residential? Okay, seeing there's none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any more questions or discussions?
I guess just a few comments. When he purchases the land, he purchased it under those conditions, okay? I'm for the rezoning. But Chris, I'm going to ask you a question. Just because the rezon may not solve his problem is separating the property. Am I correct?
Possibly. If, if approved, the minimum lot size would be one acre. So, in order to separate a tract land into two parcels, then at that point, both parcels would need to be calculated out to one acre. So, depending on the size of Mr. Ledford's property, he.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, but this would be the first step for him to go that way.
See, he may still have hurdles like property setbacks and such.
Right. With, with his property, there's no way that he can meet the three-acre minimum because the property in total is not three acres.
No question. I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning. Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you very much. And now, we will get out of public hearings and go to our regular agenda, and we will call on our county manager, Brian Epley.
So, again, Commissioner Harden, thank you for the recognition. And just a few slides tonight to try to tee up a conversation that's now been going on for almost two years and revolving around the county's exclusive single-franchise hauler ordinance that was originally bid, or most previously, most recently bid in 2017, and had one response. That response was from Republic, and that would naturally and organically expire June 30th of 2022, so in about 14 months. What that contract does is allows essentially a non-compete in the non-incorporated areas of Cleveland County for commercial industrial hauling. And that right being given to Republic was really no cap or parameters on rate for service. And in exchange for that, the consideration that the county receives is guaranteed curbside pickup specifically in, in all parts of the county, but in specifically in those further hard-to-reach areas with low population density. And on top of that, the Board of Commissioners set the rate that Republic can charge. So, for example, if someone were to live in the far northern part of the county, as far as Kizer, they pay the same for curbside municipal solid waste pickup on a monthly basis as someone who lives within four or five miles of the landfill, as long as they're not in an incorporated area. But this is, this, this conversation really has, as I said, has been going on for some time. Most recently revisited at the Board of Commissioners' work session back in February. And my goal tonight is to very quickly run through the history of this franchise, why it was established, how long it's been around, identify some critically important operational and fiscal goals for our solid waste department. I'll remind the board of the four options that were discussed back in February. And then, we, we think we may have an alternative option that would generate a, a more fair, competitive, open market that benefits both the, the entrepreneurial side for contractors and vendors who would like to participate in that market, as well as for the customers who are, at this point, on the commercial industrial side, paying a premium rate. And then I'll, I'll seek board direction and answer questions at that time. So, again, the question here is around market equity and competitiveness or lack thereof in commercial waste handling in Cleveland County. I put this here as just a quick optic to explain. Oftentimes, we do things without further understanding why. If you look at the, at the graph on the screen, you can kind of see here the X and the Y axis, when things are created, most of the time, they make sense. Most of the time, we can explain why we're doing things. But as time progresses, and we keep doing, and there's changes in leadership, and there's changes in legislation, and there's changes in all these, you know, requirements, often while we do it gets lost, and that gap creates confusion. It costs money. And, and it's, that's why it's so important for nights like tonight, where we're able to revisit and really ask ourselves, are we doing things the best way? This single, or, excuse me, this solid waste franchise has been around in Cleveland County for some time, as far back as 1972, according to minutes we can find from the Solid Waste Advisory Board. At one point in the 90s, there was a franchise, but it wasn't exclusive. There were multiple haulers and multiple franchises that were issued. And then, in 2007, the county moved to this exclusive single-franchise hauler ordinance in the non-incorporated parts of the county. But the, the, the general consistency, all the way back to 1972 through, through our current time, is that the purpose of that franchise has been so that the Board of Commissioners can ensure comprehensive coverage for residential curbside municipal solid waste pickup, and also control the rate. And in consideration for those control mechanisms, that exclusivity was given on the commercial side. So, if we look at our current households, we have about 43,000 in Cleveland County. About 18,000 of those are incorporated, meaning primarily Bullen Springs, Shelby, Kings Mountain. About 25,000 are non-incorporated. Of the 25,000 non-incorporated, about 14% of those, roughly 3,500, have a contract with Republic. And so, when you, when you look at that from a, a, a solid waste handling options, we really have consumers that have three options. If you live in an incorporated household, and here we modeled Shelby, you would pay the recycling fee, which all 43,000 households pay, and that's so that you can take waste from your home to the landfill. And as we're all aware, if it's coming from your waste, non-commercial, there's no fee. That 2208 covers that. Municipal taxes, Shelby's a tick over $12. It's about $145 a year. So, if you live there, you're paying about $167 per year. When you compare that to the other 86% of non-incorporated folks that pay, again, the 2208, the cost for using our convenience sites is about $51.53 a year. So, that person's total cost is about $73. And then you have, again, those 14% of folks that are paying about $21.21 a month to Republic, which equates to about $254. And their cost for handling waste annually is about $276.60. So, you can see a wide spectrum of parameters they are about handling. But that's our current household mix. I apologize, that's not in color. It was. This is a quick optic of the demographic of the Republic customer base. As you can see, about 3,500. I'd point out that the average property value is fairly significantly higher than the average property value in Cleveland County, which would tell us that these are generally higher-income property owners. And again, you can also see that the vast majority of their customers are under the age of 60 when, when, when analyzed from an age perspective, which, you know, tells us something about the folks that are utilizing their services. We also did a market survey of the consumer mix. And again, this is the, you know, the 3,500 folks that are paying the $21.21 a month. That rate is artificially deflated, meaning that there's not a, a, a return to driving 30 miles to pick up a 50-gallon container of municipal solid waste and charging someone $20 a month, $21 a month, and that's a weekly pickup. And that offset is to the 600 commercial customers that they have, that are paying above market. So, for example, we used a eight-yard front-hug container, which in our community has a market rate of about $184. And because of the franchise agreement, that general, that business, that corporate citizen is being required to pay $207. So, you can see that's the, the inequity created by artificially holding down the residential via rate via the single-franchise hauler ordinance. And a lot of the conversation that the boards had, you know, about modifying or finding alternative ways to handle it have been structured around. ways to handle it have been structured around these considerations. So back in February, at your work session, staff proposed four options for considerations, none of which really got traction. The first option was exactly how we have it. And that is essentially subsidizing residential and paying for that with the commercial side. Option two was a completely open market, non-subsidized. What we thought you lose there is the guaranteed coverage on the residential side as well as being able to control the rate. Options three and four were mandatory curbside county wab with a single collector. And the board really challenged staff to, you gave us feedback, you challenged us to go back and better understand the priorities, and we've tried to do that and come up with an option five that I'll present momentarily. Ahead of that, I want to give you some general considerations. These are things that we've heard from the board and things that we've tried to internalize during our analytic to make sure that we're giving you well-thought-out options. The first one is just from a professional solid waste operational perspective, and Josh Davis, our solid waste director, is here with us tonight, can certainly answer any questions. But from a staff perspective and an operational perspective, I think that the most important thing to consider in this policy impact is material integrity and the life of our landfill, meaning that we can fairly accurately predict based on volume of material and so forth, the amount of life that we have remaining in our landfill. And we want to ensure that the material coming into Cleveland County's MSW landfill remains only in Cleveland County, and there's some level of predictability there. Also briefly mentioned our closure and post-closure costs. Those are EPA and North Carolina Department of Quality requirements, regulatory requirements to monitor and monitor and properly close municipal solid waste sales. And currently, we've got a tick over $23 million liability to be paid out over the next 30 years for previously closed sales. It's a priority of the board to manage roadside litter, and then obviously, we want to be sustainable long-term from a fiscal perspective. There's also equitable and competitive pricing for our corporate citizens, folks who are paying more right now than otherwise the market would require. From a residential citizen perspective, you know, we have to consider the 3,500 people that have been receiving this service for some time and other things, very simple things like what happens if it's open market and there's multiple apparatus in a non-DOT main neighborhood multiple times a week, both the aesthetics and the maintenance of the road and the infrastructure, and who pays for that? All of those are complex considerations that warrant some time. And then finally, under the current model, there's really a suppression of potential entrepreneurial investment and job creation. And there's folks who would like to be a part of the market that simply aren't allowed to be. And that is certainly not indicative of the direction that the board and the county want to support. So just to summarize very quickly for understanding the distinction between a municipal solid waste and construction and demolition, I'll touch on this briefly. Again, I mentioned life cell management, material integrity are critically important. And you can see here, there's a variety of complexities that are, you know, regardless of the policy implementation tonight, that we have to continue to manage, and it is very sophisticated, and I just teed this up so the board can be aware of it. I'll also remind you about our annual waste hauling. You can see about 165 tons a day on construction and demolition, about 308 tons a day on the municipal solid waste side. And here, I know this isn't something that can be read easily, but the optic is intended to illustrate this is part of a pro forma analytic created by our staff and our engineers that takes things like compaction rate, airspace, daily material, and programs that out to forecast the life of our landfill. So when you look at our current MSW landfill, we have about seven phases that are planned on the 900 acres that we own out in the Highway 180 corridor. We're currently on cell three. We have seven planned. So as we stand here today, based on the pro forma analytics that we have available, we would say that there's somewhere between 40 and 50 years of life left. And if there's changes, housing developments, or the Catawba Resort, or all those things, policy changes, we have to be able to program those in and ensure that we have life, because once it's gone, getting something else titled or permitted is exceptionally challenging. Also, from a financial perspective, I mentioned we have this $23 million financial liability, which is common to all landfills across the state. That's not unique to Cleveland County. But worst-case scenario, you run out of space here because of inadequate planning or, you know, very volatile changes, so you're therefore not collecting revenue and yet you're still having to pay this liability. And those are the things that we're trying to be aware of and cognizant of as we do policy development and make recommendations to the board. So option five for consideration would be proposed as an amendment to the current ordinance. We think we could have that effective July the 1st, so here in about 30 days. It would align a competitive open market for all commercial and industrial. We would ask our vendors to simply register with us. There's no fee. It's simply to make sure that we have professional standards, waste handling procedures and so forth. It would maintain exclusivity with Republic for curbside, increase that monthly rate that they charge their customers from $21.21 to $25. And then staff would measure data such as litter volume, material intake, number of permitted vendors over a six-month period and report that back to the commissioners at your work session, which is typically in January or February of 2022, which is well ahead of the organic expiration of that contract, June 30, 2022. And at that point, the board can give us direction on whether we're bidding something similar, something different, or maintaining this pilot, or there's a variety of options that you can consider, but we feel that this is a, you know, an incremental approach, a phased approach that gives us some data to measure so that we can be more informed about some very critically important decisions, and we can give the board all the information that you may require to make that policy decision. That's what I have prepared. Here's some actions that the board may take tonight. You could authorize staff to move forward. With option five, I would point out a couple of things. Number one, we've, staff have covered all of this with Republic. They're comfortable with everything that I've presented to the commissioners. The second thing I would say is because this is a, different than the land use ordinance changes you've talked about tonight, this is an ordinance modification that does not require a public hearing, which means that it does have, if we were to change it tonight, it requires five votes. If not, then it has to come back for a second reading at your June 15th board meeting. You could direct staff with an alternative option, or you could take no action. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Board, any questions?
No questions, just comments. The staff really worked hard and worked with the different waste management hauling, and I think this is a good compromise. And like you say, you put in effect this period of time to give the option to monitor the waste coming into the landfill to make sure that when we open it up, we don't get outside waste, because you know, that's something that is going to be very easy if we don't monitor it to happen. And the more outside waste from the county we take, the less life we got in a landfill in the attempt that all of us has to keep this landfill open as long as possible for our grandkids and their grandkids, because who knows in the future what expense it's going to take to open a new landfill. So, you know, I think that this is probably the best solution we've got right now to monitor it. And when it comes time, I'd like to make a motion that we put in effect.
I would just like to say that I am glad to see that we're opening up to free market and giving people a chance instead of having a franchise with one company. I think that's the best way to go about it. I think everybody has a right to open a business and start a business, and they couldn't with this like this. And you were monitored by how much you could, how much you had to spend to even use a commercial container.
I agree with the free market system 100%. I realize we do need to be mindful of several companies coming in and maybe pick up waste in another county, because as I understand, our tipping fees are less than everybody else's, and it would be financially to their benefit to sneak some stuff across the line. We need to do that. And I don't know if this is the right place or not, but did you mention anything about the citizen recognition center at the landfill convenience site?
I did not, but I'm happy to, sir. So Commissioner Bridges is mentioning something that we're referring to as a citizen recognition system has nothing to do with the franchise ordinance, but it is an attempt modeling both Lincoln and Cobble County, who have preceded us in doing this. But as part of the budget, the board approved, and we've talked about it two weeks ago, a window cling system that identifies taxpaying citizens that are funding the convenience sites. Many of our surrounding counties, it's another strategy, I think to Commissioner Bridges' point, to protect material integrity in coming in. You know, other surrounding communities charge per bag or, you know, have different ways of controlling waste coming in, and we, because our convenience sites are A, geographically located near county boundaries, and B, it's free, oftentimes we feel like they're being taken advantage of, therefore artificially filling up our landfill with folks who are not paying for it. And so to Commissioner Bridges' point, beginning in July, we'll be, when tax bills go out in mid-July, we'll be mailing window clings to all 43,000 households. We'll get multiple ones with instructions. We'll have an educational campaign between July and October, and then begin enforcing that program October the 1st. And so between now and then, everybody will hear much, much more about it. But to your point, again, another attempt to protect that life. Yes, sir.
And the commercial haulers will just have some sort of registration with the county?
Yes, ma'am. So we have a list, and this is not inclusive, but for example, these folks who we know hauling Shelby, for example, which is already free market, we'll invite them to a meeting, let them know if the board makes this decision. And when I say vendor registration, someone like Mecklenburg County already has it, and it's essentially just tracking and, you know, so we know, similar to the citizen recognition, that they're an approved vendor, there is no cost, there is no overarching requirement. It's basically, do you have the appropriate equipment, and do you want to haul in Cleveland County, and do you promise to only bring waste from Cleveland County? That's essentially it.
I feel comfortable with option five better than the other four. You know, I'm totally for free enterprise, and hopefully we can figure out something better or something we can do with the household garbage. But for right now, I think this is a great option, gives us the ability to do something now, plus leaves our hands free to try to figure out something else for later. So I'll take Johnny's motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hands.
Just a matter of clarification, which action are we?
Five.
Option five.
Option five.
Which would be action item one.
Oh, action item one, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, now we will move to commissioners' reports and start with Commissioner Gordon.
Congratulations on the budget, Mr. Managing Staff. Job well done. Look forward to seeing what you can do with the work plan for this year. Congratulations to Mr. Floyd Queen and Mr. Dr. Keller.
Yeah, Jack, well.
Well, so sorry about that. With that, I don't have any.
It's, I think it's great. We have so many citizens in this county that go above and beyond, and I think it's great that we was able to recognize two of them tonight. I'm sure there's more out there. And I know for a fact, there's, and I think I mentioned this before, the Commission for Women has a process and a banquet in August to recognize women that have done something great in the county. So if anybody knows any lady that you think needs to be recognized, you can see me or go on our website and find the application form for, to nominate someone. Other than that, we had our Memorial Day celebrations yesterday, and I, you know, it's not quite right to call them celebrations because it was sort of a somber move when we went, I went to Kings Mountain yesterday and honored those, because we're honoring people that have given, give their life. We're not honoring all veterans that day. Yesterday was just for the people that gave their lives, the people that went to war and didn't come home. And I think that's a solemn thing that we need to always remember.
I attended most of the same job that did. To the budget, a lot of hard work went on it, and I appreciate it because I see Carrie looking at me because I gave her, I gave her a list of questions on the budget to answer them, and she came up with good answers and so forth. And I think the number five choice for the solid waste hauling is good. It does what we intend to do to have household garbage pickup and protect the integrity of our landfill for no outside waste. And that's one of the major responsibilities, I think, that we all got, for the commissioners or citizens, whatever, because we got to pass this on like, like you said, we already got $22 million of monitoring on some of the landfills we got right now. So I attended the memorial service for the veterans who passed on this weekend also. It was very touching and good moment. We've had extra meetings this month due to the budget, due to the landfill and so forth. So I think probably out of all of us, we've had anywhere from actually five to 10 extra meetings between the last commissioners' meeting, just to get all this stuff discussed, and it makes it harder for the ones that, who work full-time and so forth. So I appreciate all that the county staff has done and the county commissioners have done to get prepared for the commissioners' meeting and the solid waste ordinance. Thank you.
I can only echo what everybody else has said. Really appreciate the staff. I know that this budget is a six-month or more, really all-year thing, but for the past few months, they've really been working hard on it, and I appreciate all they've done, and I appreciate the staff and all our employees, and I'm proud that we're able to compensate you what I feel like is fairly. And the only other thing is, I see an email that says that our company or our county as an employer is one of the Charlotte's healthiest employers. And the Charlotte Business Journal is pleased to announce that your company has qualified as the winner of the 2021 Healthiest Employers of Greater Charlotte Awards. And I was just wondering if maybe the manager or Allison would be able to just give us a little bit of information about that. That's something for us to be proud of.
Well, I'm always eager to hear what Allison has to say. I hope it will. I'll give it my best, and she can correct. Is that fair?
Yeah.
So I would just say, first of all, Commissioner Gordon, and all the way down the line, as I look out on staff, and we have so many department heads here today, it's, I work with a great group of folks, and it's collaboratively and sincerely a team effort. So I appreciate the kind words and commissioner's support. This recognition is something that we've been sharing with board members now for some time, and it's been a cultural commitment to employ wellness. Healthy employees are more productive. Healthy employees, you know, generate more value for our community, and ultimately, it's the right thing to do. And then the reciprocal benefit is it also saves money because we're self-insured and self-funded. We've been recognized via the Charlotte Business Journal for businesses our size, and it's truly a testament to the board's buy-in. It really is. It's part of the budget. We have disease management programs, we have biometrics, we have employee health fair. We try to consistently encourage folks and provide opportunities to make conscious, positive health behavioral decisions and lifestyle changes, not just flings and one-offs. And so, you know, it's evidenced by our performance bonus program, so many things. And I'm glad that the company and the people who work so hard on it, not only in HR, but in so many other departments are getting some recognition from outside of us, from us just, you know, providing information to the board. So thank you for bringing that up, and I applaud the hard work that everybody has been, a part of the team that's done.
He did good, Allison.
He did, he did good. The only thing that I would add is that the buy-in from employees has been phenomenal, and one of the biggest impacts we've had in recent years has been the chronic condition management. And that's a program that is 100% voluntary for employees to participate in, and they're participating at high levels in changing their lives. They might not be able to get rid of the chronic condition, but it's improved their health and in turn has improved our claims. So it's been significant, and it's really exciting.
Okay. So the next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Tuesday, June 15th at 6:00 PM in the commissioners' chamber, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Same motion.
Okay, all in favor?
We second, we second.
We have both at one time.